Welcome to the Board of Commissioners' work session, September 6th, 10th, 2019. At this time, we'll call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, United Way update. David Ross, President and CEO.
Hey, Mayor.
Hey.
Hi, good to see you. I am the-
David, you look a lot better than last time I saw you.
Yeah, got my hair done, yeah. I am the current Chair of the United Way, and so I am just here today to assist in any questions. We wanted to keep it informal, Q and A, but most importantly, we just want to communicate where the city's dollars are being invested, and to let the City Commission know the protocols and practices. But basically, we are here just to provide information, to keep that dialogue open, so if anything that we can do to be helpful, just let us know.
David, did you get some questions from us that, so you might-
We haven't yet.
Okay. All right then.
Okay. I too want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. Each year, we try to update the Commission in one way, shape, or form. We want to keep you updated on where your dollars are going, and who they're helping, and how, how your money's being used. The, how we got here was about 10 years ago, the City Commission was being besieged with nonprofit agencies that were coming to you and asking for funds. Mayor, you'll remember that. I understand that some of that still happens.
That's why we ran and hid and gave it to you.
Well, there's days that we want to run and hide as well, but, and so, what we did, and what we do, is to try to keep the politics out of funding, and we take a look at agencies in the community that are providing an identified community need, providing with local service, with local dollars, with local oversight. So, previous, we're going to make a couple assumptions here, and we sent a PowerPoint to the Commission. Do you have that? Okay. So, in the interest of time, I think, I'm going to ask Doug Eberhart, our Executive Vice President, to come up and to go through that PowerPoint with you. It's going to have a lot of information about how we do what we do, and then, if you have additional questions, we want to be sure to capture those, because in some cases, we may have those answers right now, or it could be that we'll need to get information and come back to you, but we want to answer your questions. So, Doug?
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, one of the things that, I've been fortunate to be with United Way for many, many years, and one of the things that I always ask people, I said, "You've heard of United Way." We've been around here for 70 years, just in Owensboro, but the question is, do you really know what we do, and how do we do it? What is United Way? A lot of people equate United Way as being a building, or, or a location, or, or Executive Director, like in David's case, who's been here for many, many years. They really believe that. But really, what United Way is, it's an idea. It's an idea that brings people together, that as we join together, truly join together, that we're making a difference in the community as a whole. They're community and service focused. We're not agency focused, we're not a segment of business focused, but our job is to look at the community, and what is a holistic point of that. We're volunteer-led. We have a volunteer board that makes all the decisions. We have volunteers that raise money, we have volunteers distribute money, and we're also data-driven. We want to make sure that perceptions of the community, and perceptions of individuals, are actually proven through statistics and through data. And that drives us to outcomes-based. What has the program done? What are they doing? How does it get there? And solution center. We want to make sure that what's happening with the dollars invested, and the programs that we support and provide and things, that they're providing solutions to the community and to each other. So if you see that, that's our volunteer organizational structure. Board of Directors, ZEIT Committee, and we primarily have two large areas. One is resource development, another one is community investment. Resource development operates in, in over six counties, all six counties. They have volunteers connected with it. We have a huge volunteer team here, made up of executives and leaders throughout the community that serve in our resource development cabinet. And then we have community investment. And that's what we've been all of our time talking about, and your community investment volunteers. And one of the things that they do, when they invest their money, last year, they did 21,737,000 services were given out. So when you think of the word "services," I want you to think about every single one of those numbers represents a life. It changes someone's life when they receive a service, whether it's through getting food, whether it's through getting services off of addiction, whether it's early childhood, middle school, or many of those things. And each one of those blocks that you see there represents a specific type of service that we're focused on. Under education, you have school readiness, you have reading skills for children, middle school students, and students graduate high schools successful and ready to move on. Under financial stability, we focus on training and education that leads to careers. We offer basic needs, as well as available and safe housing, and last, managing expenses and budgeting skills. Third is health. Homes violence and physical hazard-free. We have children start life with prenatal care and healthy birth. Early development supported by primary and preventative care, and then access to nutritious food, and pursue regular physical activities. So whenever you see a list of an agency or a program name, they fall within these categories. So it's not just about funding a service, it's not just about funding a group, it truly is about changing the lives of the people in the community for the greater good, to know exactly what the most important and critical services are within the community. And that's where we are. And last year, as I said, 21,737 services. So, what does a program volunteer really do? And this is part that most people don't understand, and don't get, and we realize that part of what we do is second nature for us. So we recruit people from throughout the community, from corporations, from volunteers, from retirees, from every segment of the business industry, and we allow them to come in and serve and make decisions. And so this is the program group. So we have a volunteer chair that oversees this. We break it out into five committees, and those five committees have anywhere between three programs to see up to five. And each one of those programs are reviewed, and volunteers will sit down, and these volunteers spend anywhere between three to seven hours each person, so committee of 10 will spend 70 hours actually reviewing a specific program. And under that, they're looking for their mission. And somebody said, "Doug, so what?" Everybody's going to do their mission. One of the key things about adhering to the mission is what's called mission creeping. If a group starts creeping away from their mission, then they're chasing dollars typically. And if they're chasing dollars, there's concern about where the revenue's coming from, and so that calls us concerned, because that means somewhere in line, they're concerned they're not going to have enough revenue to operate. So that's something we really have to look at. Program design and cost. You look at program objectives and outcomes, and objectives are the goals, the outcomes what's been achieved, what life has changed because of what they're doing. The interesting part here, we do yearly comparison. We do previous year, current year, and what do they project for next year, so that we have an accurate assessment, are they improving, are they declining, what are they doing? And then finally, the number of clients served. How many people did you really serve? Is it increasing or decreasing? And what are the decisions? And then access to services. One of the huge thing that we recognize is that, yes, the program may exist, but are they operating at a time that people can actually get to them? Are they operating at the most efficient time? You know, if somebody's open from 1:00 a.m. in the morning to 3:00 a.m. in the morning, how many people are actually going to show up? So these are all things that volunteers look at and review, and really start comparing what is better, what's best for the community, and what's going on. The next group of volunteers that we have is a financial review volunteer structure. We have another committee chair that's a volunteer, and they look under, we recruit people, they're in education, look at health, financial stability. A person may look at two agencies, may look at five agencies or programs, and they are looking at their 990s, they're looking at their audits, they're looking at their statement of activities and financial position, and they're trying to make sure that they are fully compliant under all the accounting standards. They look at determine the viability of the program. Program operations, administrative costs, and cost per beneficiary. We realize some programs may cost $2,000 a year for a group, but maybe they are actually being fed every single day. That's acceptable. But what happens if a program costs $500 a person, and they're only seen once a year? Then that's cause of concern, possibly, for cost of beneficiary. So those are things we look at for determine viability. And then revenue streams. Are they increasing, decreasing? Are they actually sustainable? What are there that they're doing to make sure that that program's not only viable today, but next week, next month, next year, and five years down the road? Now, the question becomes, so they've looked at everything, what do the volunteers actually decide? They decide whether to fund the program, and at what level. They fund a program with recommendations, and a recommendation is something that a volunteer has seen they could possibly do better. And so let's say we have a CFO on there, and they decided that, you know, if you change the way you did your financials for X, Y, and Z, you'd get a much clearer picture of what your monthly statement is, actually is. And so that would be a recommendation. Or the board is only meeting four times a year, but they're not doing a lot of work. Maybe the recommendation could be, the board needs to meet six times a year, every other month, and that would drive some decisions a lot faster and a lot quicker, so you can do some turnaround. So the recommendations are things that are suggested. The organization doesn't have to do that, but it's just suggestions from the volunteers to those agencies. Fund program with conditions. Conditions are entirely different. Conditions are situations where you have to do this, if you don't, you probably won't get money again, but it's something that you need to take seriously and consider doing it. And one of the examples is withhold funding until conditions are met. There's many different ways we could do this. We could hold the money until the conditions are met. If they don't do the conditions, then they stop receiving money. And so those are the parameters in which the volunteers make those decisions, and then those decisions are taken to the ZEIT Committee, and then the Board of Directors. The program responsibilities. We don't ask any one program to apply for money with United Way. It's totally voluntary. We don't demand anybody come and ask us for money. And so when they ask us for money, that's their choice to do so, and when we agree to say that these are the recommendations of the volunteers, those agencies can accept the money, and if they choose to accept the money, they're also accepting to agree to the guidelines of United Way. And many of those guidelines just specifically state, you know, get your financials in order, make sure your programs are there, make sure of outcomes, the things that those volunteers are actually looking at. The agency can and has every right to decline the dollars. For example, if we put specific conditions on receiving money for a program, then that program doesn't have to accept the dollars, and they don't have to do anything. It's strictly up to them, and their Board of Directors. We don't have, we don't try to mandate what they can and cannot do unless they choose to accept the dollars. They do have the final decision to appeal the funding decision, so if somebody gets declined funding, or increased funding, or any of those things, they can appeal the funding decision. And at that time, it goes back to the volunteers, it goes to the Community Investment Program Chair, and the Financial Chair, and they will look at it and see exactly what the funding decision, and they have this meeting together, and really have a conversation to talk everything through. And so there's a lot of different ways that organizations receive money, and the decisions that are going through that process. So the volunteer funding decision, when this process totally starts, the staff of United Way is there for support, but we don't make the decisions. That's the great part about United Way, is these are not made in a back room, closed door type meetings, or any of that kind of stuff. They are strictly made by the volunteers, totally around the circle. Board of Directors, they start with decision, then Resource Development Volunteers raise the money. It's given to the Financial Review Volunteers to review all their financials, given to the program volunteers, the panel volunteers on each committee, they review them. We bring it back to the entire committee, which is comprised of both the Financial Reviewers and the panel volunteers, and so we can discuss it as a group. And then from there, it goes to the Executive Committee, and then finally, the full Board of Directors. And they decide exactly how much money is invested into each one of the programs that we fund. The great part about what we do with United Way is that the volunteers, the community, truly decide where the money goes. And it's a phenomenal process. It works in every community I've ever been in, and in the thousands of others that are around the community, because people who are raising the dollars, people who live in the community, make the decision as to what's going on in that community and where the money goes. So, on behalf of the 21 Owensboro-Davis County Programs, with over 408 board members providing 21,737 services, and the 190 United Way Partner Companies, that where we recruited 525-plus United Way volunteers, I'd like to say thank you. Contribution that the city gives to United Way allows us to distribute out to the programs that are there, making a difference in lives every single day. And it's because of that partnership, not only with this group, but with the many different companies throughout the community, and many different organizations and individuals, that makes the work possible to make sure that Owensboro is still the finest, the greatest and finest city in the state of Kentucky. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions from the Commission? Commissioner Smith-Wright?
You know, when we have-
Please get close to the mic.
I'm sorry. When we have the forms that we fill out as an employee, and we say that we want our funds to go toward a certain organization-
Yes, ma'am.
And if, if your board decides that that organization is not doing what it should, or whatever-
Yeah.
How do you, what do you do with my money?
We would actually call you as an individual, and get in touch with you, and tell you exactly what's happened, that we're no longer funding that group, and ask you if you want your money returned, or if you would like to direct it to another group. Because it's, to me, that's one of the greatest things about United Way, is you direct where your money wants to go, and it's totally completely transparent. If you tell us that you want your money to go to X, it's going to go to X, because I know David and everybody at the Board of Directors and everyone, that's a huge component to what we do. Make sure the dollar goes where it's supposed to go.
Okay, thanks.
Great.
Commissioner Pro-Tim Maglinger.
Explain to me "program."
Mm-hmm.
When you say "program," are you talking about the agency, a particular program that they're doing?
Okay, good question. All right, so, let's do Audubon Area is the prime example of what's going on. Audubon Area does many different things that are in their auspices, but we fund, like foster-grandparents, we fund their program of Head Start, Foster-Grandparents, Senior Companion Program, and, and so those are individual programs. If you talk about a singlet program, let's say like Mentor Kids of Kentucky, is that their program is mentoring, so they just have one program, and so that would be what we would fund. And when we look at trying to unfund programs, it's really about driving, what are they accomplishing within those programs? And really work for that. And if you look at groups that have, one group that may offer six or seven different types of programs underneath the roof, then we need to look at and make sure we're focused on what are they accomplishing underneath the one. One may have a reading program, may have a cooking program, may have a STEM program, any of those things. What are they accomplishing in the STEM? What are they accomplishing with the reading program? Is it making a difference in lives of kids, or are they just throwing them in a corner and saying, "Hey, there's a, there's a beanbag," if they still make beanbags, "if they have a beanbag, and they go sit on the beanbag, and really go from there, and just read a book on your own." So that's the difference between program and agency.
Okay. So, if you give a particular agency so many dollars-
Yes, sir.
So they can use it how they want, whether it's operating expenses, or whatever they need to use, or does it have to be for a particular one program? How does that work?
For each one of the agencies and programs that we fund, which is designed to go into program funding, and we allow them to do their own budgeting, and so their budget is what we're funding through the allocation process. So the budget that they turn in, and we give them that money, and they are able to do so.
So they can use it for what they want to use it for?
Within the parameters of their request that they sent us, yes, sir.
On their request, okay. Is any of that going to change next year, same?
One of the things we're doing, we're doing a stronger force on program outcomes, and really striving to get, make sure that those are adhered to. In the past, there's been some groups that have not had as strong outcomes in program development, and so, yes, we are going to strengthen that. It's been a proposal, or it's been a part of what we've done now for many, many years. Some of the programs have gotten away from that somewhat, and we're moving back to make sure that they understand the strength of that process.
So if someone doesn't have a particular program, you can still give them money, and they can use it for how they see fit, or is it going to have to just be a particular program that they identify?
Every agency has programs, and so, so with that, there's no way for a program, for an agency not to operate without a program. And so that, yes, they would still get money if they're having a program.
Good question. Are you asking them, can they just use it for operational funds?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so they're going to be able to use it for operational expenses?
If that's what's in their application, yes, sir. And I say that to say, okay, I'll give you an example. Mentor Kids, let's just use them. It's just one single program. They don't have multiple programs. And so part of that program dollars covers administration costs, covers fundraising costs, covers all those different things, and we'll work from that. Now, if Mentor Kids decided they want to start three or four other different programs, then they also can part a percentage of their administration cost into each program. And that's how the overall budgeting process works with nonprofits, is really striving to look at how do you spread out your admin cost, your fundraising cost, to make sure that the indirect services are being funded. You know, like administrate, the executive director, for example. Executive Director will probably never spend 100% of their time in program cost, because if they're doing any board meetings, or signing 990s, or doing audits, or any of that kind of stuff, part of their money is going to be in management in general. That cost still needs to be covered. How do they cover that? Is they take a percentage of their indirect cost and put it to the program cost, and then that's how it's all driven back. So there's ways to fund it, but they just need to be clear as to what percentage that is in their request for program funds.
Because I believe that the money that I know the agencies that the city is on the list that you give-
Yeah.
Really need that money-
Oh, yeah.
Also to operate. They can't just do a program for a particular thing. So, you know, my concern is, is we've got to make sure that they can stay and serve their mission, and, and that they can get the funds they need to do that.
Yeah, I totally agree, and that's, and the process in requesting funds for program funds covers that and makes sure that that's possible. Good question.
Mr. Sanford.
When you say "programs," I'm going to give you an example, like St. Benedict's-
Okay.
Is that a program in itself as far as homelessness?
I don't know, I'm not that familiar with St. Benedict's, but St. Benedict's may have a sheltering, you know, their sheltering program, they may divide it into sheltering or food, but St. Benedict's as a whole could be considered a program, depending on how they present it.
Okay, so if they, they're not on the list-
Right.
And that's another question I have. To get on the list, what's the first point of, who do they, who do they contact to get on the list? Would that be David?
So that should be me now?
It'd be you?
It'd be me. That they would contact me to really look at how do we get on the list, and whether we do. In the past several years, that list has not been open, and primarily, the reason why is that if you only have $100,000, and you're splitting between 10 programs, they get $10,000, and then you decide to split that to 20 programs, and everybody just gets $5,000, then we all get phone calls as to why did you reduce my funds? And so we try to make sure that, that we keep the support in the levels that we have, and as we generate more revenue, then we'll be able to open it up and do more.
Do you see that opening up anytime soon?
Actually, we do, but that's a Board of, Board of Directors' decision in the future.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Condon.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Looking back at the 2018 funding levels, you were around $1,067,000.
Yes, sir.
Then in 19, you were at $948,000. What caused about a $120,000 decrease, or, since the city's funding level stayed the same? Something externally had to happen there? Do you know what that might be, please?
Yeah, there's, I'm glad you got your question, I'm going to do it today. Just go ahead.
Thank you.
So the city's been very gracious and held it strong, and we appreciate that without any problem at all, because that is a huge plus. But as we know, there's inflows and outflows of every organization, and one of the challenges with raising dollars is that companies will decide how they choose to raise money, how they choose not to raise money. And there's some organizations and companies here in town that made a decision on how they were going to start raising funds internally, and part of those decisions actually had a tremendous impact on us. And those two companies, there are just only two or three, that probably generated more than $160,000 loss, just in two companies, and so. And then we also have other companies that would do that. Ironically, within our organization, 80% of the money that we raise is only in about, I think it's 40, don't quote me on this, but more, around 40 to 50 companies represent 80% of our fundraising.
So going back to Commissioner Sanford's comment about the amount of funds that you have available, and with you now having a decrease of 120 approximately-
Right.
Then you're going to have to evaluate all the current agencies you have now to be able to open it up to anyone else, would you not?
Yes, sir. That decision's already been made-
Okay.
Actually, because we raise our money first, and then we, and then we do that, for example, we're in the middle of our fundraising campaign now, and so that decision will be made in March through May of next year, through June, and so we'll raise our money first, and then we'll allocate after, and distribute the money after the fact. And so what we're doing right now is recognizing the challenges we've had with our fundraising, is we revamped our fundraising process. We've really, we've got a new staff person on board, and she is doing an absolutely dynamic job in getting out, talking to people, and working with people. We've launched a couple of other different program opportunities, or fundraising opportunities with direct appeals and so forth, and so recognizing that we did see a decline, we didn't just sit still, we truly made difference and made an impact, and let's change how we're doing our business, let's refocus our energies, and the organization has done that. David's done a phenomenal job in making sure that redirection is taken care of.
The other line item, it looks like it's changed, is your 211 service.
Yes, sir.
That when you go from zero to $28,000, again, that shuffles the pot, is what it does, shuffles the deck, is what it does.
It did.
And does that money stay here, or does it go to lower? What are you really doing with that type of money to administer 211?
211? 211 is a information referral line, 24 hours, seven days a week. That is the only program that I can assure you that every single resident in the city of Owensboro has opportunity to access. Everybody. So it turns everybody into a case manager. It allows people that need help have the access to call 211 on their cell phone, from their home phone, access it from the internet, or any of those areas, and they can determine where the top three places are that they will be able to get help. So it doesn't just deal with United Way programs, there's a database of over 1,500 different programs and agencies that's listed in 211 throughout the grad region, so that they can have access to services. And so 211 from, was truly probably one of the best investments for this region, because the number one reason why people don't get help is they don't know where to turn. And that even was shared in the Audubon Area Needs Assessment that they talked about, is in the top five, not knowing where to turn for services. With 211, they can do that now.
So with that funding level, that is for 211, that hits the entire grad region?
Yes, sir.
Is that what that is? And so the amount of funding, is there other funding that comes into 211 to help that out, or is the city of Owensboro paying for all this?
Oh, there's funding from each one of those counties paying for that.
Okay.
Yeah, each county has taken funds out of it, so only Davis County's funding Davis County portion. It costs more than what you see on your spreadsheet.
The city's portion of that was, was $9,445.
Excellent.
Yep.
Y'all on your own meeting here?
I was answering this question.
I'm lost. Whose turn is it? Mine? You, you, y'all good?
I just tell Larry to answer his question.
Okay, y'all lost me. All right, I have a couple of, first, thank you, excellent presentation.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you for giving us a chance.
Right, to the point. A couple of questions, you know, on this sheet you just, we just got-
Right.
There are no dollar figures by what each one of these things, is that proprietary?
Uh, no, sir, it's not.
You're supposed to divide that up, nine into 479, they all get equal?
No, sir. By no means is it. You already received a spreadsheet-
I did?
That listed all the different amounts that each one of the programs received. And so one of the things about this, we wanted to kind of give you a summary of that spreadsheet that you received, and that spreadsheet talks about available $948,000, education 51%, financial stability 23%, health received 24% of the available dollars.
Right, I got that.
And then you broke it out into the different, we listed agencies here, not just programs, but we did some programs, because Audubon area, there are the programs themselves. And we recognize that four stayed the same, three had increases in funding, and 14 had decreases, and then we had 16 with no recommendations as to what they needed to do, and we had five organizations that had recommendations and conditions that they needed to fulfill.
Okay, when you have national organizations like American Red Cross and the Salvation Army, are they funded the same way in other communities? Like, do they survive on local funding, or do they get revenue from their temple where the Salvation Army is? I just don't, you know, when we're trying to do it for local, I'm just trying to see how we justify Salvation Army and American Red Cross, which are national companies.
That's a very good question, and that's one of the things that we definitely look at, is that they may be a national organization, but thanks to the volunteer process, is that they actually make sure that they're funding, they're helping people within the county in which is giving them money. And so, like American Red Cross, the number of services they gave, number of clients that they gave, is it proportional to the amount of money that they're receiving to United Way? And so, it has to be Owensboro folks, has to be Davis County, they're not getting that money from another way else. And same with Salvation Army, any type of that group, it could even be a regional agency, they still have to tell us what they're doing locally with local dollars.
And your admin costs are funded from what you raise from inside the city, or the whole grad area?
The whole grad area.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Has anybody's eligibility ever been, has anybody ever been kicked off the list?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I've only been here a short time, not since I've been here, I will say.
Well, see, that's a, I won't say anything about that. Do any of these, I would assume that a lot of these people raise money as well, correct?
They do. A lot of them also have their own fundraising programs, and I guess one big one is Dancing with the Stars, as we talked about this morning. You know, that's a huge fundraiser for Bowware, and they did a great job with it. It also raises awareness to what they're doing, and they should be doing that. They should not be relying on United Way for 100% of their funding, and they need to be looking at how could they stop receiving United Way funding in the future, and where do they need to go to do that?
And that's exactly what I want to find out, how you come up with that equation, because that's why I feel like some of our folks that we give money to, that they rely strictly on what the city puts in their pocket. And I'm trying to devise a way for us to do some kind of, talk about some kind of matching thing, you know, that they get $100,000 a year for normal, and if they raise 50, then we'll match that to get them to 100. How do you, you don't have to try and, I don't have to try and explain it today, but I'd like to know what kind of analytics you use to come up with that theory, that since they're raising, like, I think the Dancing with the Stars raised $107,000 or something last time, or $90,000 or something. So they would still qualify to get money from the United Way?
Yes, sir.
When you've got, let's just say, the Benedict's place had been in the mix, you know, it, I'm just trying to balance this out in my head, because if we do $953,000 to some of our, to a bunch of our agencies, how can we come up with a formula that would say, okay, if you raise this amount, we'll participate at this level?
Yeah.
So whenever you get time, I'd love to have that discussion with you, because I'm sure you've got some formula.
Yeah, we'd love to have the opportunity to do that. There's a lot of different ways to do it.
The, okay, already asked you that. And as a description of what a service is versus a program, did you tell me that? I already forgot it.
No.
How can you describe a service, like feeding five kids or something, or?
It could be that.
That could be a service.
That could be a service.
Okay, and the program would be the overall feeding of?
The program could be reducing hunger within this geographic area, and by that, and then the services, I feed this x number of children, four meals a week, or this many seniors, 12 times a week. So the service is the number of people and what they're actually being delivered.
And so, the outcomes of formula that you use?
Yes, sir.
How do you come to that decision? You know, like, if they get $100 from you, how do you decide what an outcome, an acceptable outcome would, you know, in the medical field, we have, you know, different things, but I was just curious, from dollars and cents and services and programs, how do you equate an acceptable outcome for the money that you, that is given to them by United Way?
Okay, so I guess two parts to that. One, we never determine what the outcomes, what the organization program's outcomes will be, that's up to the agency or the program itself. They decide what their objectives are, and they decide what their outcomes will be. And then, what we decide is, do they fall within the scope of that one spreadsheet that lists an education, financial stability, and health, and the different areas? Do they fall within those areas, and making a difference within that? For example, it could be, a program says, I don't want any child to, under the age of 18, to ever become pregnant, between, you know, any female. And that could be one of their objectives. And their outcome would be that out of 225 females between ages of 13 and 17, zero children became pregnant. And so, that would be their outcome that they're trying, that they have reported back. Then the volunteers that get together, they decide if it was an acceptable ratio for the amount of money that was invested. And so, and that varies based on program to program, and what they're trying to achieve, and what they're not trying to achieve, because costs are different, based on what they're actually trying to, the outcome that they're trying to get to. And so, there's really no set formula as far as what is a standard cost.
It's strictly subjective, then?
It's strictly subjected by, and that's one reason why the volunteers come in and do that, but they use the statistics around that.
Just a quick comment. When I became, when I was appointed, when I decided to serve on the board, one of the first things that I wanted to do was serve on the allocation committee to the investments, because I wanted to see, how did this work? You know, how do we go about, as a board member? And so, I have served on the investment committee, and I have taken home those applications to review, I've done the site visits, and I've huddled with my committee, and we, there's a lot of dialogue and conversation going back. We do give very detailed analysis, but some of the things, we look at how many people were assisted versus?
And maybe what?
How many folks were assisted? If they met their benchmarks, if they met their goals. But one of the things, to your point, Mayor, do they have a large sum in reserves? And if so, if they're sitting on this money, why do they need our money when we can serve St. Benedict's or somebody else who needs some help? So those are all the factors. And so, when we do divide the money and make those investments, we look at the big picture to see where those dollars can best serve the community, and where the greatest need can be met. So I encourage anyone, and even the city commission, if you have that opportunity when that time rolls around, to actually sit in that committee meeting, or do those, it's very interesting to see how those volunteers actually make the decisions they make. So I just wanted to.
I liked your terminology, investment.
It is an investment.
Sounds better than allocation.
It is. I don't like the word allocation. It's an investment in the community, and it's the community giving back to the community, and the community helping the community be a better community. That's way too many words, community words.
A lot of communities.
But I'll work on that.
And the final, final thing I would like to ask is, do you make it public that if you would like to apply for fun, for an investment from United Way, and open it up to the whole community? How would someone that's like, like St. Benedict's, for example, we're kind of picking on them?
Right now, right now?
Because of the limited amount of funds you've got?
Right now in Davis?
I know you'd already answered that, but you said you were gonna open it up again, I think, and so, how's that word, how does that word get out to the nonprofits?
Once the board decides to open up a particular area, then they will make that announcement, and the way United Way is moving is, they're gonna be looking at a major impact area. They're not going to, or, I speak for the board, I'm not gonna speak for the board, but our board's gonna take a look and see where are the greatest needs? As a matter of fact, I'm gonna ask Doug to come back in just a minute and talk to you about how we're determining that now, but gonna take a look at what, where, what does our community need the most? Where is it that services are non-existent or are not meeting the need? Now, I just have, does that answer your question? Let me try again.
No, I mean, it answers a particular part of the question. I'm more worried about informational. How would, say like you're gonna be doing financial stability, that's one of the categories, would you look for agencies that are doing that particular thing and say, email them, I guess nobody calls anybody anymore?
Well.
And say, here we go, you got a shot, gonna open it up, please apply?
What we would do is go to the newspaper and make it public, to where we would say, this is what we're looking for, this is, this is where there's a particular area, there's a particular need. Whoever is addressing that, you can apply, or it could be an agency that that service is in their mission statement, but they haven't been working on that. And then our volunteers would take a look at that. Now.
So I would assume we'll use social media as well, not just the news?
Absolutely.
James, I love you, but, you know, there are people with Facebook.
Any.
Well played.
Mayor, please, please note that that statement did not come from me, okay? There's a couple of things that I'd like to just follow up on, and I wanna make sure that we're answering your questions, because what, what we're doing here today in this dialogue is, we're trying to understand what kind of report you want from us. Over the course of the last some odd years, we've given big reports, and they've said, mm, too long, don't, don't do that. We've given shorter reports, and then we've given spreadsheets, and we're here today to ask you, we want to leave with what each of you want to see. We want to know, because we have that, Doug has that, and we want to be able to get that back to you, so that you can see where your money's going and the difference that it's making. Now, a couple of notes. Commissioner Maglinger, when you ask about funding and funding for a program, when an agency applies for United Way funds, there's an application that's?
Twenty-three, twenty-five.
Twenty-three pages long. And in that application, they say, this is what our, our agency is, this is what our mission is, this is what we do. And then throughout that application, they specifically say, this is what we're asking money for, specifically. And in that, they include a budget. And that budget could be for that program, or if you're operating a program inside the building, some of that program cost could be to keep the lights on, excuse me, to keep the lights on, to make sure that there's a warm place for kids in the winter. That is included in that application. And then, what volunteers like Joanna do is they compare that application with the application with the others that they have. So the agencies do a real good job of describing exactly what they need and what they want. Commissioner Conder, you talked about, and I'm glad you brought it up, you talked about funding levels. In our area, we have been extremely fortunate in the fact as national funding has gone up and gone down, we haven't gone down like others have in the nation. But we had the perfect storm in the last 18 months to two years. We had, a few of our corporate partners came to us, actually three, and they said, we are with United Way, you're our favorite charity, you're our favorite organization, we want to continue working with you, however, our business is not generating the money that it needs to for us to continue to make corporate gifts. So we're not making corporate gifts anywhere else, and as soon as we're able, we're coming straight back to you. You can imagine, being a businessman, we have visited with all three of those, and we're very hopeful that those organizations will come back in the next funding cycle. Extremely hopeful. Also, our board saw the funding trend, and they said, look, we need to rally resources and change what we're doing, because what we're doing is not working, or is not working as well as it once did. So they, we brought in Doug and others to help change with fundraising and help with the community investment piece as well. When you ask about the 2-1-1 process, one thing that I don't think we, we shared with you is, we basically, in partnership with the United Way Henderson, serve every county in the grad district. Each county, based on population, each county pays their portion back to United Way for the 2-1-1 service. This is something, Commissioner, I had the opportunity to talk with Commissioner Conder a week or so ago. The 2-1-1 service line is something that is going to be a revenue generator, or has the potential to generate revenue for our area. That is one of the most exciting things that we've had for a long, long time. And in other areas, 2-1-1 partnerships are being made, for example, with not-for-profit hospitals, that, where they use 2-1-1 services in conjunction with hospital patients that are being released, and the hospital reimburses the 2-1-1 partnership. Additionally, as I shared with you, and since I shared it with you, I want to share it with the other commissioners as well, we are working on a statewide level to enter into a new partnership with the Cabinet for Families and Children and in Social Services. We expect that sometime within the next year, that 2-1-1 will be linked to other social services, so that the significance of this is that people can go to a lot of different places, point and click, point and click, and qualify, and be eligible, qualify, be qualified for the services that they, that are available to them, be eligible, their eligibility can be approved, and then they'll be directly placed in those particular programs. That's gonna be a game changer. It's, it's in the process of happening now. You talked about matching funds. Some of, and I believe it was Commissioner Maglinger, asked about how do you determine where monies go? That whole process, there may have been you, Mayor, that whole process is how it's determined, but there's a piece in that. Some of the funding that United Way distributes, we distribute to those agencies that have a federal four-to-one match. So that means for every dollar that we place, and I think it's 20,000, let's say with one agency, they're able to get $80,000 brought in to this organization, to that organization. Also, some of our programs, especially for programs for children most in need, are restricted, they cannot fundraise. If they get money from the federal government, they cannot fundraise. They can't do it. So we provide their match and their money, so that they can continue receiving those federal dollars. So our volunteers have to, in some cases, decide, do I need to fund this program, or do I need to fund this program where I get four more dollars for every dollar that we spend? Now, one of the things that you did, and you asked about the addition of new agencies, over the course of the last 10 years, you have come to us, and we have appreciated the partnership, we appreciate it's a privilege to do business with you, and we realize you have a choice in where you put your money. And we appreciate you selecting us. But over the course of the last 10 years, you came to us at one time, and you said, we have another agency that we want to see funding continue for this agency, but we don't want to be involved in that. And we will continue funding, we will add to your funding if you'll pick this agency up. That agency was one that we funded in other areas. It is an agency that met and identified community need, that agency was well-run, that agency fit all the criteria, and we took it in. So we added a new agency based on your recommendation, because it came with and we took it in, so we added a new agency based on your recommendation, because it came with its own funding source. So we do do that if there's a situation that merits. Does that make sense? Okay. I want to know if, I understand that there are, are there any other questions? Have we answered everything that, that you want to know? Because that's what we want to do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm much better informed, I don't know about the rest of the folks, but, uh, so I'll ask Commissioner Smith-Wright, how do you want this report given to us? One was too long, one was too short, one of them was in Spanish, whatever they said it was, so. Do you have a preference?
I thought, I, I thought today's, uh, presentation was very informative, and, uh, I don't know that it's.
You know, when they do the year-end result thing, they said that you have a preference of how you'd like to see it. I'm just trying to get a feel for it, so they can.
Just, you can just email it to me. Don't you say it?
Yeah, I figured they'd email it to us, but I'm saying, he said one time they had a big spreadsheet, and we didn't like that. One time they had a long, drawn-out stuff we didn't want to read. One time there wasn't enough information. I'm for letting them decide what they feel like is best to get the information out to us, and then let us get together if we have to and discern if we understand. I don't think we can choose.
Okay.
Is my point. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but.
Because I was going like, what do you?
But I think you all, you're the professional here, you know, and, and we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay. We, uh, we, we have information, we have it, um, we have a lot of it. And sometimes distilling it down to a bite size is difficult.
Well, you know, the questions that we've asked you today, that's the information that we want back.
Okay.
Like who got in, who got out, you know, uh, I'm still curious about the analytics that you use for the outcomes. I think that's, so that blame's subjective, it's interesting, and maybe I'll have to get with Ms. Smartypants over there and let her teach me about this.
Well.
But I think that, that, that's interesting, and then also I would like to find out, you know, question like, how do you, about a matching stuff? When we do our own nine hundred thousand dollar giveaways to all our different agencies, I'd like to pick your brain on how you guys come up with that formula, I think it'd be interesting.
Sure, sure. Be happy to do that, and, um, yes, Abby, excuse me.
Mayor, and Commissioners, I just wanted to say a word. I sit on the, I sit as secretary as, on the YMCA board, and I've been on an allocation committee previously, many years ago, won't say how long. And I've also been working with David for that long, and now as a YMCA recipient, or United Way recipient. I'll tell you that their process is, it is subjective, but it's very fine-tuned to the point where they have a system of checks and balances that is much needed in each agency. YMCA's been struggling for a while, and we're trying to get everything back on track. They called us on it and said, hey, guess what, get your, get your stuff together. So it's subjective, but it's subjective to the point of there's a human element in there, and they understand, they see that people are struggling, and they see people that need more of a funding for the great things they're doing. So it's, I think that wiggle room is there, and believe me, I'm all about a system of checks and balances and making sure that people are, are held to the, the carpet on what they're, they're calling for. But I just wanted to say that as a funding agency, they're very particular about, um, making sure all those demographics are there and people that are served are there. Sorry.
That's okay. Well, I just know in the, in my business, you know, that we don't really always agree with the outcomes that, that someone else has produced. So I was just, uh, just curious as to see.
Well, sometimes, Mayor, um, I know this might surprise you, but sometimes agencies don't always agree with the funding levels, um, that we send to.
That's why we asked you to do it.
So, and then that's when, um, sometimes, uh, you hear, um, you hear, uh, from them. And we want to give you enough information that you can answer questions that are posed to you. We have an open line with Nate. As a matter of fact, Leland and Angela are city representatives on our Board of Directors. So we want to keep that, um, communication open, and to be sure that you are informed. And as a matter of fact, the person that signs your check has, was our treasurer for several years. So we put a lot, we put great faith in her.
Who signs our check?
Oh, Angela does. Oh, okay.
God bless you, Nate. So, um, but, uh, we appreciate the business, and, um, what you do means a lot. It's helping a lot of people, and we're gonna do the best we can to make certain you-know-how-many, and we're here to answer any questions we can.
Appreciate it. Anybody have anything else? Anything from the staff? You are dismissed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Joanna.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye. Okay. City projects list. Who's in charge of that? Oh, city manager.
Had the list reviewed, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Smith-Wright?
What about Gabe's, oh, we've done that already.
Abby's tower or something like that now.
I was curious as, do we have a, a number yet on the bridge lighting?
Yes, Mayor, as a matter of fact, we're, uh, working with the three contractors that bid on the project, and, uh, they had, I guess, for some cost clarification, it was due by noon today, so as soon as this meeting is over, we'll finish reviewing those numbers, and I'll be making a recommendation to the city manager.
So what about the closing of the bridge? Is that factored in at all? Are we gonna be able to do any of that? Okay, good. I'm doing very much, we only got like five projects on the whole dag on city list, what's going on? The, uh, okay, that's all I have. Commissioner Smith-Wright? You have anything for the projects list? Commissioner Maglinger?
No.
Commissioner Conder?
Just a quick comment, Mayor, um, lighting the Clovergar Bridge, is that just basically now been pushed back to some projected date that you might have? Do you have any projected date that might, like, next century?
Don't get yourself in the noose, man.
I have a projected date to give to the city manager this afternoon.
Oh, okay, very well. Thank you, Mayor.
It's, it's gonna be a secret, too. Commissioner Sanford?
Uh, just a comment, uh, on the past project, the dog park is being used. I actually went over there myself. Y'all did a great job, uh, and everybody was complimenting it, so, very good.
So I've heard someone say that it's an odorous operation, is that true?
Sanitation, it's the nature of the business.
I mean, who's monitoring they actually participate in their pickup?
We, we encourage each, uh,
Encourage.
pet owner to clean up after themselves, and of course, public works, I'll let Wayne speak to that if he'd like, but, uh, they have the facilities available so that you can pick up after yourself, and then they have a parkkeeper as well that addresses any issues.
All right. Anything else? City manager? That's it? Got a, got a little bit of food still right there.
Save it for later.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn, could I have a second, please? All the favor indicated by saying aye.